Council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. I want to thank all of you for bearing with us. We had the budget presentation a little bit earlier, so, um, thank you. Um, at this time, we're gonna move to our roll call. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot.
Here.
Councilmember Tesari.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Rigby.
Here.
Mayor Lormore.
Here. All right, uh, tonight's invocation will be presented by Pastor Dennis Morales of Calvary Chapel Eastvale. Sir, welcome.
Good afternoon. That's great. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this time that you've given us, and we thank you, Lord, for, uh, just another time to come together as a community to seek what's best for our great city, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for the city that you've given us to be a part of, Lord God, and we know, Lord, that you have given us a future and a hope. And we thank you, Lord, for the, the spirit of unity here, Lord God, amongst us, and we thank you, Lord, for all those involved, Lord God, especially our mayor, our city council members, city staff, community leaders, Lord, and, and pastors and teachers, Lord. And we pray that they may continue in the spirit of strength and courage and wisdom as they seek to keep our great city moving forward, Lord, uh, breaking new ground and guiding our city toward fortitude and prosperity. We pray, Lord, for our public safety, our first responders, uh, grant them special protection, Lord God. We pray for our troops, families of the troops, Lord, represented here today, our veterans. Grant them just a special grace and peace and protection. And as we come to you today, we ask, Lord, for your guidance, your wisdom, and support. We invoke your presence here this afternoon. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion, to dwell on the spirit of understanding, Lord, to build bridges and allow us to grow closer, uh, through that, as a city nurturing the bonds of the community, Lord. And we pray, ask that, uh, you may continue just to remind us that all we do here today, uh, all that we have accomplished is to pursue the truth and, and something greater than ourselves. We thank you and we praise you and we just give you glory for all these things. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, at this time, we're gonna move on to our Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Rush. Can we please rise and join me in the pledge of our flag? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we are on to item number three. Um, that is the additions and revisions section. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on an item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. An action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mr. Aguilar, do we have any changes?
We've had no requests.
Any requests? Gentlemen, any requests? Okay, seeing none, we're moving forward. At this time, we're moving to item number four, presentations and announcements. So, item four point one is a presentation on the I-15 express lanes provided by project manager David Thomas of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, followed by an update on the I-15 Limoneye Avenue Interchange Project provided by Communications Director Dennis Green. Um, so, let's start with item four point one.
Evening, Mayor, and city councilmembers.
Evening.
Thank you for having me tonight. Appreciate the talk and how you did it update. Follow my presentation, there'll be a short video, and then Dennis will come up and present the Limoneye Interchange Project. And then we'll both be here after the presentation, heard the question on my head. So, just a recap on what the project is about. This is the Interstate 15 Express Lane Project. Uh, the project will construct two express lanes in each direction on Interstate 15, uh, from Calco Road in the south part of Corona to State Route 60 north, approximately fifteen miles stretch. Most of this project, uh, the construction will be in the median. There's a little bit of outer widening of the ninety-one interchange area. For the most part, we're going to see the construction in the median. I'll show you the picture of what that would look like pretty shortly. Uh, we have a bunch of bridges that we will, we will be widening with this project. So, with that median construction, uh, there are several locations where we cross over the local street. In one case, we cross over to the Venus Capodole, where we do need to widen some bridges. There's eleven of those situations. And then, uh, lastly, uh, we have multiple entry and exit points for the express lanes that we've built. So, if you're familiar with the State Route ninety-one express lanes, there's basically entrance and exit points at the end of that facility. And there's one entry point and exit point in the middle called counted line. Uh, this project will have four entry and exit points, kind of midway through the project, kind of one at each different city location. And I'll zoom in on, uh, on that in a minute here. But, uh, just to talk a little bit about the benefits of the project. Uh, this project completes a commitment in measure A, measure A is the half-dead sales tax, uh, that was approved by voters to add one lane of capacity on Interstate 15. This project, because of the express lane, uh, project, will be adding two lanes because we're able to get a second lane that will be paid for by toll revenue. So, we're actually benefiting greater than what the measure A commitment wanted. Uh, with this project, there are jobs that will be created during construction, uh, but also this will support jobs in the future as well as recruit some traffic on the corridor. Finally, the, uh, express lane network, uh, in Riverside County has just started, so the ninety-one project is the first, uh, express lane project in Riverside County, extending the Orange County express lane, uh, this being the second. But there are plans to expand that and looking for ways to have more reliable travel time within Riverside County, and that's really what we're in search of here. Just kind of recap of our schedule, where we've been and where we're headed. So, we began this process really early twenty sixteen, uh, with going out to bid for the design-build contractor. That process took quite a bit of time. We get to an awarded contract in April of twenty seventeen, and we awarded the contract to Skanska Ames, don't want to mention. These two contractors that were joined together for this large project. Um, in addition to that contract, Skanska Ames will be the contractor that for the most part you will see out there, uh, working. And we have a separate contract for the tolling elements, which is a specialized element of the project. There's a separate smaller contract that will install tolling devices that will hang on the gantries, for example, cameras along the corridor to basically operate, construct and operate the tolling part of this project. Basically, from now through twenty twenty, we're going to see construction. In fact, uh, just tonight, we have closures in the Eastvale area, the Limoneye area, and we're going to start, uh, some construction in the Alba Shol. So, what are we building? Uh, basically, the top, uh, front section here shows a portion of the existing facility where we have four lanes. Uh, this area up in here has three lanes on I-15, uh, that you can see basically we're disclosing the median there to add two express lanes in each direction. The express lanes will be separated channel-wise or similar to what you see on the ninety-one. So, just zooming in a little bit on the Eastdale area here, uh, this kind of shows the access points, uh, in and out of the express lanes. And so, starting at the, uh, ninety-one, if you're coming north, there will be entrance into the express lanes. Uh, there will be entrance and an exit, divided by the combination of the black and white triangles there, uh, in the second street and sixth street. And there will be other things, uh, south of Limoneye, entrance and exit from south of Limoneye. Those will be the way to every corner. So, there will be plenty of access in and out of the facility and located at key local interchange as well, the traffic and interchain. Some benefit of doing that is you have all traffic trying to enter and exit at the one location, uh, which can create a bottleneck. So, this will help spread, um, the traffic out to different points along the corridor. And then, lastly, at the north end, there will be an exit point. Somewhere that can't take all the other interchange area, uh, where traffic will be able to exit if they're headed to one of the State Route sixty connectors east to west. And then you can also stay in the express lanes and continue straight forward and exit after the six. Just a little bit about, uh, a little bit of detail about how the express lane will operate. It will be a little bit different than the express lanes, and we're updating technology. Technology continues to change in this area. Uh, this will be a state-of-the-art, uh, in fact, we're working on some things that are still state-of-the-art, but we're trying to improve this project. We'll have the latest in electronic toll collection. So, a gas track transponder will be required. And you can kind of see a picture of that off on the right there. Uh, this transponder that we'll be using for this facility, some other facilities have started to use this as well, uh, called a switchable transponder. And you will declare yourself, declare your occupancy, uh, to three people. Uh, there is a three-person, three or more person discount. It's going to be about fifty percent discount for using the facility if you have three or four people in the vehicle, but you also have to have that transponder. Jumping back to dynamic pricing, so a difference from State Route ninety-one, State Route ninety-one is what we call time-of-day pricing. It does change with congestion to keep the lanes free flow, that's the goal. And, uh, those rates are posted on, on our website. They have changed, they have looked at and changed, kind of on a quarterly basis, up or down, to try to maximize the use of lanes and keep it free-flowing. This will be real-time congestion pricing on I-15. And part of the reason for that is with the multiple access points, it's a lot more complicated to try to keep it free-flow, we've got traffic coming in and out to various locations. So, the solution to that is dynamic pricing. And dynamic pricing does, uh, through detection along the corridor, it will adjust the pricing, even on just a few-minute basis. The pricing will change. There will be signs that you pick the price for each entry point on the corridor. The price that you see when you enter is what you pay. We keep pointing to that. But there's some very complicated algorithms that figure out the pricing and congestion per year. Operations and customer service center will be moved by June. That should be in Corona. We're working on that as a separate project, but related to this project as well. Toll revenue. So, I mentioned earlier that because this is a toll project, we're able to actually construct an additional lane. So, we have a loan, a federal loan, called TIPI loan for this project, and it's a grant of a hundred and fifty million dollars. And we will be repaying that loan over thirty-five years for toll revenue. And that's the primary use of toll revenue to pay for that additional lane, uh, repay that loan. It also pays for the operations and maintenance of the facility going forward. Fifty-year, um, lease of Caltrans for that, for the median, or RCTC to operate the express. A lot of folks ask about excess revenue. If there is excess revenue, we, we hope there will be. Uh, one of the key points with excess revenue is that it has to be kept within the corridor. So, it does go back into a state budget and get reallocated, remains in the county. Uh, commission, thirty senior commission, which, uh, Mr. Rush has part of, uh, votes on projects that that money will be used for. So, it stays local, it's addressed in a public forum, and, uh, projects that it will be used on will be voted by that commission. There are rules about where it has to be located along the corridor. It can't be used on the other part of Riverside County, the state is in the corridor along the median. Just a reminder, uh, we do currently have a detour of the Santa Ana River Trail. Uh, this is used by equestrians, and it's, uh, well-posted. It's been in effect since January. And, uh, this is just to show, to find out that, uh, the Santa Ana River is closed at the I-15. There is a detour map that's shown up here that's also posted several places, which is on our website. At the yellow of the line, you can probably see here is the detour route to these local streets, which do accommodate equestrians. The Santa Ana River Bridge, one of the wide, uh, medias, one of the eleven bridges. So, that's why we're in the public to stay out of that construction zone. So, we've been doing a lot of coordination. Uh, the construction is just about to start. Uh, we've picked off some various meetings. Uh, one of those is a public information meeting. There's different PIOs from the various cities and counties along the corridor. Uh, we've done a lot of coordination with the Limoneye project. You can hear a presentation on that here a little bit. Uh, we had two public, uh, poppage meetings in February, one at the south of Marco, and one at the south of Corona. Uh, those went very well, and they were very well attended. And, uh, we just had our emergency responder meeting last week. Emergency responders on the corridor. We'll have those periodically as the planning moves forward. It's basically to get the emergency responders on the same page, what we're building, how they're going to be able to access the corridor during construction. So, what to expect? So, I-15 meeting work is starting here at the Eastvale. So, we are starting with the Limoneye interchange area. It's actually started, uh, earlier this month, and tonight there will be, uh, some pavement work on the shoulders, which we've started to see. Uh, one of the reasons it started, we didn't anticipate starting until next month, is we are accelerating the project. We're getting at a Limoneye interchange project. We've determined that this is the best approach to helping both projects move according to schedule. We're accelerating our project, so the Limoneye project can be constructed and completed by the I-15 project. So, we will complete our work in the Limoneye area by August twenty-third, is our target, uh, so that the county can come in and build the, uh, the Limoneye interchange project kind of piece. I mentioned the shoulder strengthening and then replacing K-rails, which has become just following that. So, looking at this section here, uh, this is the Eastvale section. We've got three lanes in each direction. You can see in the bottom slide there, there's kind of a dark area where we're going to strengthen the outer shoulder for a little bit, uh, so that we can move traffic out onto the shoulder. That allows us to shift everyone over, put out a K-rail, walk inside lane, protects the public and our construction workers from entering that area. And so, this, that dark area that you see, we're going to strengthen it starts tonight. Just to schedule what to look for in this area, the project overall will split into four segments. We actually call this segment the Eastvale segment. And, uh, the structure of Limoneye will now separate even more from the overall Eastvale schedule, accelerate that. So, you can kind of see point one and two here are split within the Eastvale segment. We will be starting, we have started the Limoneye area, and we will complete the rest of Eastvale in the north. We got a little bit started July, continue through January. We don't have to finish one to start the next, so we will start to see other construction south of this point as well, uh, in the coming months. Uh, one local bridge that we have in this area is Riverside Drive. It will be widened. It's one of those bridges that we're going to be widening for the median. Uh, we expect to do most of that work tonight that will affect the public. The public closures along Riverside Drive under the I-15. And traffic will detour around that area. Most of those closures you can expect to be at the night on Riverside Drive. Just some reminders. Uh, we have this also posted on our website, using it for the social media. Just some things we want to remind the public about for the project. Watch for workers, obviously, and equipment. It's going to start to get, uh, busy out there. Uh, we do have a reduction in speed limit at fifty-five miles per hour. That is coming. We will see that soon. Uh, reminding everyone that it finds hard double in construction zone. Allow extra time for lane and ramp closures. We have a construction alert that goes out a week ahead of the next week. It could be on Thursdays. You can sign up for that on our website. It also gets, and then we email down to whoever's on that list, but it's also posted on our website as well. Uh, there's travel acts out there, obviously, and then folks will be able to use, uh, construction. There are several projects along the corridor, including the Limoneye interchange, the Caltrans, South of us, that we're coordinating with. We're doing that PIO meeting, and we're doing a lot of coordination of the projects. So, it may not be our project that might be doing whatever tenure is in that area, but we are trying to coordinate that. So, speak as one voice to the best that we can. There's going to be times that we don't get it right because there's so much different construction going on, and we are working to try to coordinate that effort. Move over a lot, just a reminder about that, the move over law is something fairly new in California. I just want to remind folks that an emergency vehicle is pulled over on the side of the road with flashing lights. That a law is to move over a lane to be safe to do so as you pass that emergency vehicle, and that's emergency vehicle with flashing lights on. We are funding additional freeway service patrol during the project. Basically, there is existing freeway service patrol, using trucks that help disabled vehicles get off the road when they break down. Currently, we have freeway service patrol, RCTC funds during the peak periods of the week. We are expanding that, mostly getting to a K-rail construction zone area to be, uh, be throughout the day and then also on weekends in the construction zone. What to expect? I talked a little bit about local streets. Uh, for the most part, we're not going to be on local streets and ramps on the project. There will be some interchange connector ramps down to ninety-one area where there will be some impact closures. Most of the work, lane closure work, will be done tonight. That's what we allow the contractor to do. For example, work tonight, we do lane closure from eight PM northbound to five AM, that's the window we allow. And it's southbound from nine PM to five AM, the window that we allow the contractor. Noise for the most part will be restricted, nighttime work, restricted noise, seven AM to seven PM, of course, local ordinances allow. And we do have, uh, at times, uh, we'll be on that, that will be approved through the city or local jurisdiction, through our construction management process. Lighting, uh, there will be construction lights out there. We try our best to not correct them in order, although I can travel public, uh, just focus on the construction zone. Dust will be controlled with water trucks, obviously, in that, uh, other projects. And the air quality, uh, we have strict requirements about maintaining vehicles to reduce emissions. This is the construction vehicles that we use for the project. Uh, these are the, uh, different ways to get information about the project. Last bullet up there, basically Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, all have the same way to do that with the express lanes. With that, I'm going to skip through this video. Okay, let's come up.
Excellent. Thank you.
The Riverside County Transportation Commission is excited to introduce our new video series, Fifteen Facts on the I-15 Express Lines. This series will provide information about the upcoming I-15 express lanes in Riverside County. Fifteen Seven One focuses on safety facts, the most important part of any project. Safety is RCTC's highest priority, from protecting drivers traveling through the project area to implementing procedures to keep our crews safe. Project contractor, Skanska Ames, uses a care for life safety program. The goal is to have an injury-free work environment. All crew members undergo extensive training. They're likely to see themselves or others at risk. Our crews are doing all they can to keep the worksmen safe. Join us by doing your part so we can help everyone get home safely to their loved ones. Be alert, be aware, and surround. We all have problems with that. Prepare yourself. Please remember, watch the workers and equipment. A fifty-five mile per hour speed limit will be enforced within the project limits. Expect the unexpected. Follow the move over log. Allow extra travel time and need patient. And know before you go. So, stay connected.
Really don't want to stop that beautiful music from my presentation, but I guess we're gonna have to move on. But I understand safety, and I want to remind you, before I get started, remember, it will be sweet when it's complete. But it may be a bear while construction is there. But let me tell you some of the great things we're doing. We try to neutralize that bear somewhat. As Dave said, we're working together with safety as the number one priority. A little bit about myself, I spent six and a half years on the road for Caltrans that they have me foot and operator. During that period, I was hit twice by big rigs while I was working, and a car came into the closure, tried to kill me while I was flying. Safety is a big one. I'm aware, I've been out there, I've paid my dues. Our project, existing conditions, you're aware that we're going to build the new bridge. We're going to be congested across the I-15. And I'll go through this pretty rapidly. Existing conditions, we have structures, we have drainage facilities, cell towers we have to address, and a parking lot. Due to some of the challenges with our project, with the Limoneye Bridge Replacement Project, uh, this is an example. Uh, the yellow, I want you to notice that some of the coordination that's taking place between the I-15 express lane and the Limoneye, they're going to get into the building yellow portion first, so that when we start, they will not be there. We'll move in on August twenty-third or so. The good news, I'll bring you, that we've already advertised for a contractor, March twenty-third. The advertisement went out. We're looking to select a contractor in June of this year and then begin work on, uh, August twenty-third. All right, so my project. All right, typical cross-sections. We're gonna provide you with three-way lanes in each direction. We're gonna have bike lanes, light turn lanes, shoulders, and sidewalks as part of the Limoneye project going across the I-15 freeway. The other thing about it, we want to have an aesthetic element, but we're gonna have lighting, we're gonna have, uh, decoration on the bridge. And a lot of this was worked out with city staff, and we've had a great relationship working together to make this a gateway into your city with all of these beautiful features that are going to be added for the project. Outreach, we've already begun coordination with the emergency responders, laws, forces, school transportation, and elected officials. We held the first meeting. We met again with a joint, uh, outreach with the I-15 project. So, we're all working together to provide the same benefits. I have a little bit more of a challenge with the business outreach and coordination. We had a meeting with your staff in the chambers already. We met with Eastvale Chambers and some of the other chambers attended. We have a workshop coming up, maybe on May twenty-second, where we're gonna talk to the chambers and try to develop communication strategy. Number one, the message we have to craft. First, the positive message, it will be sweet when it's complete. But the second message that is delivered and developed is, I don't want you to worry the end, but you're coming here to do business. If you're only community, help us by using the method route. So, we've got to balance the message, and I don't want to steer you away if you're coming here to do business in Eastvale or in Brooklyn. But we're already working to craft that message, and we're gonna have public information meetings as we get my contractor on board. And I mentioned to you before that our contractor, Mike, has to attend two-hour, one-hour meetings a month for safety and for dealing with businesses. It's in his contract, super intensive project management law or above. Let's come and face the community and work with us so they hear the challenges and the concerns rather than me. I'm the Mount East, but I want the decision maker to be at the table with you. So, a member of the city council updates will provide those to you. So, a member of the city council updates will provide those to you as you deem necessary. And then part of the other things we're gonna be doing, traffic management coordination. Now, one of the things I'm gonna have going on in my project, my detour is gonna be simple at night when I demolish the bridge. I'm gonna have to demolish the bridge and then put up false wood. And what we're gonna do, we call ramping, where we just take the traffic off the freeway and then put right back on, go across the bridge and get right back on in the old way. The challenge is, during this period of time, we're gonna be way out ahead of that with public information, is we have to close the over crossing during those periods. Because if you allow cross traffic, you have to stop the freeway traffic, which then would result in rear injuries. And the CHP is then requiring us, when we do this operation, to close the over crossing to all except emergency responders who will be able to come across over crossing. This will be late at night, generally you're talking ten PM to about four or five in the morning. A number of times over project, we estimate, probably a dozen times over the course of the project with our full freeway closure. At night, coordinated with all of the other projects that are going on at the same time so that we all know who's doing which operation and how to avoid confusion. And so a project will be launched on our social media and webpage. And then, what you should expect on our project, full freeway closure. In order to tear the bridge down, I can't help but driving on the freeway while I'm demolishing the bridge. They'll happen generally in one direction at a time. They'll come in, they'll tear down one side of the bridge, and then when they're ready, they put the false wood up, the temporary support system, and then we'll start working on the bridge when we're done. We have to tear down the temporary support system and then we're getting ready to get out of there. We're gonna have the ramp closures while we're doing that and also realigning the ramps. There are a lot of challenges and stages with my project in order to keep traffic moving and the business community vibe. Lane closures on the freeway, and then you're also going to have reduced lane widths. We'll be putting in our K-rail, which will reduce the lane width, as well as on top of the Limonite over crossing, the lanes will be narrower in order to keep as much capacity on the bridge as possible. Changing traffic patterns, that's gonna be the key. Just getting the information out, working with your city and Aruba, the patterns are going to be changing. And mind you, I'm quite frequently, I'm gonna run through some of those changes just so you can get an idea of the magnitude. And the reason that's necessary is to keep traffic flowing. So first, the red is the area, the red are the areas that we're gonna be working at and changing traffic patterns, building temporary loop ramps in order to keep all movements available during construction. We're gonna have to build temporary maps and then you'll see we'll do half of the construction. We'll work on the red side while we move traffic to the other side. When we finish that side, then we do what we call a flip-flop and we'll put you, we'll link the connections with the ramps remaining open, then we'll start on the red on the other side while you drive on the blue side of the bridge. So there's gonna be change of traffic patterns and we're gonna have to communicate with you and you have to spread the word that the traffic patterns are gonna change. We're gonna need you to pay attention and get the information out so we can build the project. And when we're done, express lanes will be completed in yellow. We'll come in with the ramp improvements. Our schedule, the maps attached to contractor, March twenty-third. Expect to open the bids in June. Our contractor will begin August twenty-third, building the Limonite over crossing, completed in late twenty nineteen or so. President Parkers, thank you very much for being here and remember, it will be sweet when it's complete. It's gonna be a bear while construction is there. Yes, Dave, you have another question? Do you have any questions?
Anybody have questions right now? I do have one question. August twenty-third?
August twenty-third.
Yes, okay. Yes, Mr. Green. So August twenty-third is when things are anticipated to start?
That is correct.
And there were the, there was a slide up there, two A, two B, or the, when will we be seeing the narrowing of lanes begin? What month? Are we doing this in twenty eighteen? Are we doing it?
Twenty eighteen, we will start on the bridge.
So what goes first? What happens first? What's the first step?
Well, the first thing is the temporary ramps that have to be built. The loop ramps to key before we can switch traffic over and provide all the movements. But what I'd like to say tonight is, when we have our contractor onboard, we will bring him because the best information we have available, we're telling you tonight. However, if the contractor comes onboard and tells us, I can build this bridge in nine months and I can save you ten million dollars, somebody's gonna listen to it. Travel project in Beaumont, where we PR'd, our expectation of how the job would go, contractor came up with a wholly different program and we're working through that right now with the community. So what I wanna do is give you the best information available. When our contractor's onboard, we can give you exact information.
So it starts August twenty-third?
August twenty-third.
All right.
Dave will be gone, we will be here.
Excellent, sir. Thank you so much.
In the end.
Oh, we do, we've got another. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Green for the presentation. Has the, you said the contractor hasn't been selected on Limonite and I-15. Has the construction management firm been selected? I heard rumblings that that was going to the board, not approved. Do you have a question on that?
It's approved.
Okay.
Falcon Engineering Services is the construction management firm for whom I work.
Okay. Awesome. And then, yeah, I hope, you hope it was approved. And then a question for Mr. Thomas on the, on the I-15. We had a little bit of discussion about the transponders. Can you just maybe in a paragraph or less for the public, explain the difference between the ninety-one and what will be the I-15 transponders versus what I think most people are used to from OCTA?
I'll try to keep it within.
Okay. And I would know if we can get back to that slide, maybe? Who's ever operating?
So the main difference is for HOV-three carpools, the switchable transponder that will be using for declaration of three or four passengers. Where on the ninety-one project, there's a separate declaration lane halfway through the corridor that you have to get into in order to receive the HOV discount. On this corridor, we will not have those declaration lanes primarily because of the lack of width to construct those. But also, technology is changing, so we're using the switchable transponder. The reason why it's one, two, and three is because some other corridors have a discount for two or more people. So this is the same transponder that you will use anywhere in the state. It's fully operable in any part of the state, Bay Ridge, any toll facility in the state. So all you need is really this one transponder. I will also state that there is another technology coming, which is going to be sticker tag. Give you a little bit of a heads up, that'll be coming in twenty nineteen. And sticker tag will be much less costly, where you would want to get a sticker for all of your vehicles, it'll probably be a few dollars. And you would just put that sticker on all your vehicles and you don't have to worry about a transponder, except if you are a carpooler, you'll still need this transponder to declare. You can use express lanes, pay the full toll, just using the sticker tag anytime you have that sticker. So that is coming. In the meantime, this transponder is a normal transponder as well.
Thank you. And for customers that have the old technology, you're working on a process to notify those customers and transfer them over?
Right. There's no problem lying with current transponders out there now. You will be notified when new transponders come out, sticker transponders basically, and you'll be swapped out from what you have.
Thank you for your time.
I can validate that. I have the three. I have the, both my vehicles. They'll send them to you right away. You can't get them.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentations. Great information. Thank you for keeping us up to date. Okay.
Mayor Lamar, before we continue, we do have one public comment card for item four point one.
Excellent.
I'd like to call up Christopher Fulger.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council, city staff, members of the public. As many of you might know, ninety-one's roads have proven to be ineffective at facing traffic. If anything, it's made traffic worse. Now, after many hard learned lessons, you'd expect agencies and public officials to not ignore such projects. Unfortunately, that is not the case. As a result of this naivety, orders of Eastover, Corona, and neighboring cities now have to ignore the usual construction freeway traffic and spill of traffic on the streets, only to then be faced with fifty miles of useless toll. That collective revenue may get seized for projects such as transit, public transit and bike lanes, which will ensure faster traffic on streets. Furthermore, the fifteen miles of tollings ordered in Nub, San Bernardino County is in the talks of adding another twelve miles of tollings to the fifteen, starting from just below the sixty freeway, all the way to Duncan Canyon Road, which is just past the two-ten. The San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, more commonly known as SAMPAG, currently has their I-15 border project in environmental review phase. If that budget receives approval, then it will have twenty-seven miles of tollings on the fifteen, starting from Tahawke Road to Corona, all the way to Duncan Canyon Road in Montana. I don't know how many of you use temporary for your daily commute, but if you do happen to drive there frequently, then I have some bad news for you. SAMPAG just last year approved the I-ten border project, which seeks to put thirty-three miles of tollings, starting from Gary Avenue to Corona, all the way to Forest Street in Reddick. The first part of this project will begin by adding ten miles of tolling, starting from Gary Avenue to Corona to the fifteen freeway in Ontario. So look forward to that. In other car-related needs, the California Transportation Commission Road Charge technical advisory committee will be meeting in San Diego on Friday, the twentieth of this month. Their topic of discussion will be vehicle mileage stats for motors. According to this committee, they think that jacking up the price of gas by a dollar doesn't provide sufficient funds for transportation, maintenance, and repairs. This line of thought stems from the fact that vehicles are becoming more efficient, hence motors won't be filling up as much. So their solution to this problem is to tax, is to tax drivers on the number of miles they drive. This committee just last year finished a road charge pilot program. In this program, they were able to get five thousand drivers to track and report the number of miles they drove over in that month period. During those nine months, many observations were made, including privacy, mileage reporting methods, and participation. Whether or not you want to be taxed by the mile, I suggest everyone look into attending this meeting, as they only occur about every six months. The meeting will be held on Friday, April twentieth, at ten AM at the Caltrans District Eleven booth. The address is forty-fifty Taylor Street, San Diego, California, ninety-two, one zero.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on this item?
That concludes.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Aguilera. Okay. In a moment, we are going to be joined by Alan, or Alan? Jolly? Jolly. I like it. We're gonna be joined by Alan Jolly in a moment, but I want to take a second. I was reading through the proclamation. This is for the DMV Donate a Life California, April twenty eighteen. There were a couple of facts in here that were, oh, they were news to me. So where, I'm gonna read through some of these wherashes. Whereas the organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion, compassion to those in need. That there are currently one hundred and eighteen thousand individuals nationwide, and more than twenty-one thousand in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, twenty-two people die each day while waiting due to a shortage of donate, donated organs. That there are, at any given time, six thousand patients who are in need of volunteer marrow donors. That a single individual donation, individual's donation of a heart, lung, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine, intestine, intestines. Intestine can save up to eight lives. And the donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to fifty others. There are a lot of wherashes in here. This is a worthwhile cause. We have in California here, I saw, I was reading through earlier, that there are, let me make sure that I'm reading it correctly. I'm missing it right now, but we don't have enough people that are on the, that are donors. So pull out your driver's license, look on there. If there is a pink sticker, or it used to be a sticker, now it is actually printed on there, if it's pink, you're doing the right thing. Please, let's go up here and, yeah, he has a present, oh, do you have a presentation that you would like to make, sir?
A little bit.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so my name is Alan Jolly. I am a resident here in the city of Eastville. I talked to you guys last year, I believe, so shouldn't be anything new, but I'm gonna kind of turn around and let you guys know a bit. So I'm in the back with one legacy and my whole purpose is to talk about my daughter. Okay, my daughter, my daughter, her name is Kate. And eighteen months old, on April thirtieth of two thousand and ten, I got the worst phone call of my life. My daughter was being put into the back of an ambulance and being rushed off. She was lightly hit from a regional medical center, she was in loma linda, and spent five days in the ICU. They did, they did perform brain surgery on her, tried to relieve the pressure, but unfortunately they couldn't save her. And she was declared brain dead on May fourth of two thousand and ten. Now, if you're a Star Wars fan at all, May the fourth, okay? My daughter, I hope it was good parenting or just luck, she's a huge Darth Vader fan. So it was kind of fair that she found her family. So I get to come out here and I get to talk about my daughter. My wife and I decided that we needed to join the awards and we did so. And her heart went to an eight-month-old, in action in Seattle, Washington. Her kidney went to a forty-four-year-old man who lives somewhere in Southern California, and her liver went to a seven-year-old girl. So those three people are alive today. Last month, I spent two days. This little girl, her name is Sophia. That's my daughter's Harper's name. And we spent two days with her and her family. Obviously, we were universal citizens. Really, organ tissue donation is very important to me because we saw a miracle that provided this little girl's life. She's funky, she's fierce, and actually, my daughter was on the Rosemary Club two thousand and seventeen. Now, this is the actual floor graph that wrote down Colorado Boulevard on the Donate Life Club. My family and I were able to decorate this, made this ourselves, off of the picture I did show you. There are fourteen million people in California, which I think the number you're looking for, that are currently registered as organ tissue donors. But unfortunately, only one out of about every two hundred gets can be someone that can donate organs. Almost anybody that passes away can donate tissue, but organs, there's certain laws, and I'm not gonna go into it, but there has to be a certain way that you pass away in order to donate your organs. So with a hundred and twenty-two thousand awaiting, one of those is actually my cousin's daughter, who's awaiting a heart attack. So it's very big in our family. I have a cousin who was a donor as well. So if you don't have the pink dot on your license plate, you can go to Donate Life California, you can go to donate, try to think what the other one is. You go to the DMV and do it as well. But if you go to the California website, you can actually specify what organs you want to donate. And that supersedes any other registration that you have. So I would encourage you, if you don't, if you're not there, do it. And then make sure your family knows as well. Make sure your friends know as well, because there's a lot of situations where somebody passes away and they don't know, and it creates a tough situation. So make sure you share that information on why you want to be a donor. I would also invite you to join with us. We have our team, our team Caitlin, at the Donate Life Run Block on April twenty-eighth at Cal State Fullerton. I believe it's with information, I believe, somebody went last year. Okay. So I did see you there, but you come find me. If you come, if you go.
There's a lot of people there.
There was fifteen thousand people that ran in last year. So April twenty-eighth, please come and join us. Come find us. We have a big team, we have a big old team, mostly my family and coworkers and stuff. It is a great event, it is a fundraiser, and all the money goes to spread the important, the important message of organ tissue donation. So, thank you very much. Thank you for the declaration. It's amazing. It means a lot to me personally, as a member of the city, that this is something that you guys are willing to support. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You can't go anywhere because we're all gonna come down there to you and we're gonna present this.
And if you really want to sign up, I can sign you up right now. Just show your driver's license, I can do it.
Okay, that concludes items four. We are moving on to item five. That's the student liaison report. And Mr. Zuniga, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. Good evening, council members. Eastville Elementary is having a PTA Rock Stars of Tomorrow performance this Friday. Gates open at five PM and the show begins at seven PM on their grass area. It is Teacher Appreciation Week for tracks A and D. They will have a movie night showing Coco next Friday, April twentieth, at seven PM. Eastville Elementary has started their state CAASPP testing for tracks D, and will continue testing through the beginning of June for tracks A, B, and C. The testing will occur April ninth through the, through June eighth. Their two-day Finding Nemo talent show dates are Wednesday, April eleventh, and Thursday, April twelfth, at six-thirty in the multipurpose room with a cost of five dollars per person. Clare Barn Elementary concluded their jump rope for heart fundraiser, strong meeting their school goal. As for Ronald Reagan Elementary students, their D-track students will be tracking off on a minimum day Friday, April twenty-seventh, and they're welcoming back C-track from their break on Tuesday, May first. Eleanor Roosevelt High School is currently holding their campaigning week for their future ambitious students, attempting to become Eleanor Roosevelt's ASB President, Vice President, Treasurer, Historian, Class Council Representatives, and many more positions. There is a date, debate scheduled tomorrow, Thursday, April eleventh, in the cafeteria. Candidates will be giving their speeches for Eleanor Roosevelt students to hear and get to know their upcoming student, campus-associated student body. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Any questions for Oscar? I have two questions for you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Number one, have you seen Coco?
Yes, sir, yes, I have.
Good?
Yes, it's a very great movie.
The second question. Student body, are you running?
Um, I am a senior, so, um, I will be graduating this May, so I will not be running.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay.
Real quick, I do have one question. They do have, they have, um, released the graduation date, right?
Yes, it's May thirty-first.
May thirty-first, and that is at?
It will be at the Citizens Bank Arena in Ontario.
So the first time having it there, right?
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
Okay, that concludes our report. Great report, Oscar. Thank you. Uh, this time we're moving to item number six, and that is public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on the agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time that the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole, and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mr. Aguilar, has anyone submitted a request to speak?
Yes, we've had three public comment cards, the first one being from Harry Dimon.
Excellent. Sir?
Honorable mayor, city council, city staff, and fellow residents, my name is Harry Dimon. I'm the president of Eastville Chamber of Commerce, here to provide some updates. The chamber is growing. That's why they gave me all this handwritten notes, so I typed it up, so I can remember all these things. Here twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen so far, very successful years for the chamber. Since the chamber started back in February twenty ten. Last, uh, last week on April fifth, we had our first, uh, business and breakfast event at a new location, at the New Day Church. And we had over forty businesses at the end of that event. We have moved from local one thing because of some of their management issues, so we have to move to a new location. So the new location will be, between now and end of the year, will be at the New Day Church, uh, for the morning fixers. With the growth in the city and growth in the chamber, we have been seeing that a lot of members, visitors, starting to come from Rancho Cucamonga, primarily, uh, city of Upland and Claremont. Our most recent at least are probably seven or eight chamber members are from those cities. They're traveling into Eastville. And our most recent member that's up last week is a pet worker, and we are working with them to coordinate their, uh, lemon cutting and, uh, grand opening event. We're also seriously looking to, that how many businesses are in Eastville. And I'm, I want to thank Michelle and the city staff for giving us a lot of help with that matter. As of today, actually, the mailer back out today, we had an oversight mailer that we sent out to nineteen hundred businesses that are registered in the city of Eastville. Primarily, most of them are home-based businesses. Uh, the Business Expo is coming up, so primarily is the Business Expo information is on that card. And most of those residents should receive that card, the business owner should receive that card by the, uh, payment, or later by money. Uh, our next event is coming up is the National Day of Prayer Breakfast. This is the third annual, like, started about three years ago, been a very successful event, and we're gonna continue to do that. It's on Main Third, and it will be hosted at the same place, at New Day Church on Schleishman and Hamler. The, it's almost a whole large event. We have only paid for payment for two tables. Other than that, it's a menu that's pretty sold, hundred and sixteen. I think it's called the event, and we also have, uh, the recent company Stan Sherman coming and joining us for that event.
Harry, uh, I appreciate the update. We, we gotta cut you off at three minutes. I'm sorry, sir. Does anybody have any questions for him?
I mean, I mean, questions?
Appreciate the update. I'm sorry, we're just, we're started a little bit late this evening. Thank you, sir. Mr. Aguilar?
Our next public comment card was received from Squeaker Bootsma.
Excellent.
In the interim, if there's anything that I can do with you with your decision, please ask. All I'm asking you, and I would like to think that you would use any consideration that I would give you. Gentlemen, to be a week of space, as well as my heart and soul, your position is not a Henry Olman.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, our last public comment card was received from Justin DeWell.
Good evening, mayor, council, uh, city staff, and Eastville residents. My name is Justin DeWell from the office of Assemblymember Sabrina Cervantes. Just wanted to fly a brief update from our office, as I do from time to time. Um, yesterday, Assemblymember Cervantes introduced Bill, uh, AB one sixty-two. This bill would make, um, all carpool lanes on freeways in Riverside County, um, continuous access, access. That is, cars can move on or off the carpool lanes at any point. Um, this has already been implemented in some places in Northern California. Um, and, uh, the, uh, Traffic Safety Center, UC Berkeley, did a study and found that this actually have a continuous access. Carpool lanes is safer, leads to fewer collisions. Um, so, uh, that is AB one sixty-two, continuous access carpool lanes throughout the county. Um, uh, in the community, this weekend, we are hosting a disaster preparedness workshop with the Fire Department. Uh, that's going to be at the Corona Fire Department Headquarters, um, Saturday, ten AM to twelve PM. So do come out, um, if you're interested in, uh, disaster preparedness. Um, also, lastly, just want to thank the city, uh, thank the Chamber of Commerce, and thank, uh, I have the Eastville month, and, uh, the Kowans for partnering with us on our great, uh, Eastville Veterans, uh, Resource and Awareness Event. Very well attended, um, very important, and really grateful to the community, so just wanna extend that thank you to everyone. Um, and that is it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Does that conclude our public comments?
That concludes public comment.
Excellent. All right, we are now moving on to, I'll make sure. We are now moving on to our consent calendar. That is, um, number seven. Item seven point one through seven point seven. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion, unless a council member, staff member, or a member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Mr. Aguilar, have there been any requests to, uh, pull an item?
Yes, we've had one request to pull item seven point seven.
Seven point seven, and that is in relation to the ninety-nine cent store. Okay, um, any other council members? Would you like to pull anything? Yes, sir.
I would like to pull seven point four and seven point six for discussion, please.
Seven four and seven six.
I would move seven one, seven two, seven three, and seven five.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, um, would it be okay if we start with item seven point seven, Mr. Rigby? Okay, let's do that. Uh, we had a member of the public that asked to have that item pulled?
Yes, we had one member of the public asked to pull item seven point seven, and that is Betty Wu.
Okay, Ms. Wu.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce a community to specifically thank you in thanks on your hard work, the contribution of unanimous residents in nineteen ninety-six to our collection. I would also like to express my personal gratitude towards all other participating members, including city staff, who have said it will be serious of nineteen forty to the river. I also would like to remind the city staff, providing more study and representation in the future projects. There are many rules subject to major improvements on study and, uh, representations that were used for the ninety-nine cent store act collection case. Informational materials used for representation should be complete and fair. Comparisons should be made against the apples, not against oranges. As Eastville community matures, we now have higher expectations. We expect that the city applies certain criteria that select and prove locations suitable only business and merchants. Last part of the words is for ninety-nine cent store, but too bad they are not here today, so I can just stop and say some things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, did anybody have any further comments or questions about this item? Gentlemen?
I'd move item seven seven as recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, moving to item seven point four. Mr. Rigby, do you wanna clarify any of your questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious, on, on this one, it just seemed pretty vague, um, in, in just requesting to allow a, uh, an amendment to the personnel's policy. Um, so I just had a couple of specific questions on that. One, it's allowing to amend the personnel policy regarding vehicle allowance for executive level. Who is considered an executive level?
At, at this current point, the personnel policy and procedures only allows for the city manager to receive a vehicle allowance. Um, in recruiting for the assistant city manager and getting into negotiations with the top candidate, that became a, uh, point of particular interest to the candidate. And in doing our research, uh, we found that it is customary in the industry for the assistant city manager to receive a vehicle allowance. So at this point, there is no other personnel that are allowed that benefit, uh, other than the city manager. And, um, this being a, a negotiation with the candidate, we felt that that was an acceptable, uh, request. However, the dollar amount is not equivalent to that of the city manager.
That kinda led to my other question, but before I get into that, my second part, I guess my first question is, is on this. It says that the finance director is part of that also. Is that accurate for a car allowance?
Um, that is up for negotiation. It's, uh, when you get into the higher level positions, um, allowing for certain deal points is, um, is, well, it's acceptable. It's, it's consistent with, uh, what other cities do across the region. So it's, it's not a given, but it's a possibility should, should that, um, come to fruition. It certainly is something that should council wish to remove the finance director from consideration and bring that back. Should that become, uh, an ask during the negotiations, we can certainly do that. Uh, the priority at this point was to allow for the assistant city manager to have a vehicle allowance because they will be expected to participate in a lot of meetings and/or represent the city in my absence, which would require the drive, would require driving to a lot of meetings.
In, in my opinion, the, the assistant city manager, I think, is warranted for this, but my question becomes the, the finance director, and I think that, like you said, can be something that can be revisited. Um, the other thing that I, the other question that I had is, is, um, maybe up to my, my colleagues also. Do we need to set a limit on that, or do we leave it as an open limit? Because right now, in this, there is no. Because right now, in this, there is no, there's no limit.
Well, currently, the city manager's, the, the maximum is five hundred dollars. That's what the city manager's position is allotted as a vehicle allowance. The assistant city manager, it being a negotiation point, it is not equivalent.
But that, that's what I'm getting at, with reading this, there's nothing, there's no language in there that says that it's a max of X amount or anything, because I would hate, I would hate for this to get to a negotiating point that it's substantially higher than what we originally intended. Not that it would happen, but I think, I don't know, I think there, there needs to be some sort of limit set.
Okay.
And then I'd like to see it revisited for a finance director if needed.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, council would like to strike the finance, uh, finance director from consideration for a vehicle allowance at this time? And the council may wish to add a not to exceed clause for the assistant city manager position? Or is that, is that my understanding?
Before we answer that, Mr. Rush, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you. Right. Regardless of this and any negotiated vehicle allowance, every employee, every city employee, not contract, is eligible for mileage reimbursement, correct?
Correct.
And we can't take that away?
Fifty-four cents a mile, but we do have policies and procedures in place that, that guide how and when that reimbursement can be given. So it is, you know, staff can't reimburse for driving around within the city limits, for example. It is meant for attending conferences where you have to drive, you know, to Coachella or something, or a meeting. So yes, that is, that is something that...
But that's like a labor code issue, I mean, we, absent our policies, we can't just outright deny it.
The, the reimbursement per mile?
Yeah.
No, sir, that's, that is actually also allowed per IRS code.
And the mileage reimbursed, or the car allowance would replace that, correct?
That is correct, sir.
So if we didn't do that, my only concern is, and this happened at the state level, when, which is a completely, you know, bigger issue than ours, where they took away all their cars because the perception of state legislators having cars was bad. But then the amount that they were, the state was having to shell out in mileage reimbursements, like tripled that, because they were, you know, paying seven fifty a month for a car lease, which is a lot. But, you know, with all the mileage and everything, it was quad, you know, doubling and tripling that. So I'd only would throw that out as consideration, I mean, I don't know, you know, I drive, well, I, just in my taxes, I put twenty-two thousand miles on my car last year. You know, I know Clint drives a lot, so I mean, you do get out there, you know, especially things in the desert and things of that nature. So I'd only throw that as a consideration, it probably might be a savings long term, and especially someone at the executive level, you know, having to, it's a little bit easier sometimes than having to fill out a mileage reimbursement, you have to do those mileage logs, I know for IRS and all that stuff, um, as well, so.
Mr. Rigby? And that was part of my question, was just who exactly is at the executive level? Um, just so that we can clarify that, is the finance director considered at the executive level? Would that be included in that, or is that outside of the executive level?
As it currently stands, the only executive level position would be me that, that is eligible for a car allowance. The personnel policy does outline other positions that are executive level, but they have a different benefit allocation. So when you get into the assistant city manager position and the city manager position, those go into contract. And in the contract, there are different deal points that can be negotiated. But, you know, we can certainly remove finance director from consideration for a vehicle allowance. I, in, I, I don't foresee the finance director position having a significant amount of travel.
That was kind of my thought, too, I don't see the, the finance director traveling as much as ACM, I think that's, without a doubt, that, that they need the car allowance, because they are expected to be at different meetings, different areas. Like Councilmember Rush said, it could be out in the desert, wherever it is. I would move for, for this to go forward with the approval of the finance, or of the ACM, to be adjusted in the Policies and Procedures Manual, but to withhold the finance director and further evaluate that at a later time.
We've got a first, we have a second from Mr. Plot, Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormar?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, excellent, moving on to item seven point six, Mr., yes?
I'm sorry, for clarification, the second part of the recommended actions was to authorize the city manager to execute necessary documents?
Yeah.
That was, that was okay?
Per the motion, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, do, do you understand what the, okay, all right, excellent. Okay, moving on to item seven point six, Mr. Rigby, you had a clarification question?
Yes, thank you, sorry. Um, as, as I was walking around, just walking different neighborhoods this week, I noticed that there are many yards that are very well kept, that have plants planted in their flower beds, that do not have mulch completely surrounding that. My question is, as I was, as I was reading this ordinance, it says that you have to have mulch in any unplanted area. I just don't know how, are, are we going to be that? Is this ordinance put out there to be that nitpicky that, you know, if you have plants in a flower bed that does not have mulch, that you can still be cited? I guess that's kind of my ultimate question with that. Is that something that we just need to look into and?
So that is the way the ordinance, or the policy was written? And we can certainly clarify that through the planning department. It does potentially become an onerous task with code enforcement. I do see your point, sir.
I just think, I'd hate to say, I'd hate to see someone get cited for not having any plants or mulch, and then someone not to get cited for it, and the person that got cited come back and say, well, you know, they don't have mulch, but yet they have a very nice yard that has plants, but just no mulch. So I think, and I, I thought I alluded to this in our, when we discussed this, I think that part needs to be a little bit clearer in this ordinance.
Okay.
Hate to revisit it, but I think that that needs to be...
So, if I may, council, this is on for second reading, so if you move approval tonight, it will get codified as currently written, so if there's a desire to revisit this with the amended language before this gets codified, it would need to be pulled, and we would have to redo the ordinance, which would slow the implementation of the aesthetically consistent problem being resolved. The other option is to see how it plays out in terms of code enforcement, because there is some flexibility, in my view, in how it's, it's interpreted, as to what's an unplanted area, where if you have plants, they require some spacing, I mean, it's, I, I think a reasonable person could interpret it to not require mulch in a planted area, and see how it plays out, and if it becomes an issue, we could bring back a, an amendment.
I think that would be good, especially to not have to revisit it. And that was kind of my question, was is there a little bit of flexibility to be able to have a little bit of leeway to, to give to the code enforcement officers, to see a yard that is aesthetically, you know, pleasing to the eye, and say, hey, yeah, they're missing a little bit of mulch, but hey, it conforms with the overall aspect of the ordinance?
Yes, the code enforcement officers do have some discretion, you know, spirit of the law versus the letter of the law, so they, they do have some discretion. The intent of this is not to go around and start photographing everybody's yards and see who has mulch and who doesn't, and how close it is, or how, you know, whether it's adequate or not, because I know the wind blows here, and there goes a bunch of your mulch, right? So that was not the intent, the intent of this is truly to address the conflict that we had between our municipal code and the preservation overlay as far as the, the term aesthetically pleasing or consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. So if we run into a problem and we start getting challenged on interpretation and semantics, then we'll definitely bring it back to the council with an amendment.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a comment question, or maybe a suggestion, I don't know. Um, I know we've never had it for this particular item, but we have for, like, our diff fees and other things where we follow up. Flash blinded me. It's fine, it just caught me like right, no, it's, you're fine, it just, I looked at it the wrong time. We, we have like an implementing resolution, is that something, not to create more paperwork or work, but that we could do? And then, that begs the question, if we do it for this one, do we have to do it for all of them? But maybe just a suggestion, I don't know if it rises to that level?
I, I don't think this rises to that level right now, but certainly if there are problems with interpretation at a later point, we could have some sort of resolution that clarifies the council's intent, or, or just an amendment to the ordinance that clarifies the council's intent, either way, it would work.
I appreciate the, the clarification and, and just the reminder that code enforcement has the flexibility to kind of discern as to this ordinance. I would move for approval as is.
Second. Move a first, we have a second, Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormar?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, that can, couldn't, that concludes our consent calendar.
All right, intestine.
Intestine.
Everyone's a critic.
Okay, you guys are awesome, I love you all. All right, moving forward, public hearings, we have no public hearings tonight. Is it getting warm in here?
It is hot here.
Can we, see, everybody's leaving because it's too hot.
Unfortunately, the school district does put the air conditioner on a timer. So we would have to locate the janitor to override the, the timer on the AC.
Okay, um, we are...
Thus one of our agenda items.
Yes, that's a perfect segue into item nine point one.
Perfect.
And nine point two.
Okay, we are now moving on to items nine, item, city council business. Item nine point one, agreement for exchange of real property and joint escrow instructions. Ms. Nissen?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lormar, members of the council, this item is an exchange agreement of real property and joint escrow with the Lewis Development. This is regarding the Palopolis property, which many citizens fondly recognize as the Palm Farm above Silver Lakes on Hamner, and our infamous Owl's Corner at the corner of Hamner and Riverboat. The city was, just to give a little bit of background, the city of Eastvale took possession of Owl's Corner as part of eminent domain proceedings from the county of Riverside that were pre-incorporation. Once the city incorporated that property, rights to that property did belong with the city, and their eminent domain lawsuit, the eminent domain lawsuit between the county and the landowner was settled, and the county deeded the Owl's Corner over to, to us, with the intent that there would be a public purpose for the development of that parcel. We've been sitting on that parcel for, for a long time, and the original intent was possibly to build a city hall there. If you recall, several years ago, we started down that path, and we did some outreach regarding a future city hall at that location, during which time we got a tremendous amount of feedback from the citizens, which was, why build there when we're not able to, it's not a large enough parcel to incorporate some of the needs of the citizens, which was, for example, a library. That was one of the, the top comments from our citizens was, this is not going to sufficiently meet the needs of the community, particularly as we grow and build out. So we have a developer that, that the city is, is quite familiar with in not only its, its city of Eastvale, but regional, that's the Lewis Land Developers. They are in escrow on the Palopolis property, which is adjacent across the street from the corner of Riverboat and Hamner above Silver Lakes. And we had entered into a letter of intent with Lewis to potentially purchase some land from them, a larger parcel of land that would allow us to not only place city hall there, but to also build a future library. As, as part of that agreement, we had proposed an exchange using Owl's Corner, which was appraised at one point six five million dollars, and apply that towards our land acquisition over at the Palopolis property. And the Lewis Development Group has agreed to that exchange, so they will be accepting the parcel at Owl's Corner in exchange and credit towards a larger parcel at the Palopolis property. If, if we were not to do any kind of exchange, the straight land value over at the Palopolis property for what we are proposing to acquire, which is approximately seven point one four acres, would be five point three four million dollars. That's, that's not taking into consideration the value of, of the city's parcel. With the exchange agreement and giving up our parcel that the city owns at Riverboat and Hamner, and moving forward with a purchase of land at the Palopolis property, we are looking at a difference of three point six nine million for seven point one four acres. This parcel at the Palopolis property will include other types of uses. They are going, Lewis Development will be building that out to include such types of uses as, as a hotel, um, different restaurants. This is part of their, their plan that will be going to the Planning Commission, and there's currently an environmental impact report that's out for comment. So the city hall and library would be potentially at the back of the parcel. And we, we have had several events, several different meetings and workshops, which I have put in chronological order in the staff report for you regarding our civic center search for a parcel. We, we did have two council members that, that sat on an ad hoc committee. That was council member, former mayor Joe Tesari and, um, well, now mayor Clint Lormar. So there's been numerous meetings about this, the direction was given to staff to, to proceed with the Palopolis property. And what we are proposing again is the exchange of, of the parcels to buy down the cost basis on the land acquisition. Let's see. We are, would like to close escrow in August, should council choose to move forward. That would be consistent with Lewis Development closing escrow from the landowner. And they would like to receive entitlements applied to the development for the remainder of the property and, and the city exchange property. The city and Lewis Development execute a joint improvement agreement that details the public improvement work that will be constructed by the city and Lewis, funding this, and Lewis, and the funding and schedule for those improvements. The city, if the city fails to commence construction of the future city hall project and civic center within seven years, we do have some, that does give Lewis some limited rights to repurchase the, the land at the Palopolis property. The city must commence construction of the future city project within seven-year period. But if the construction ceases before completion for at least twelve consecutive months, these are some of the conditions that would, would cause a potential repurchase. Prior to the completion of the future city project, the city desires to accept an offer for the purchase of the property from a third party. So, if we move forward with this transaction and, and purchase the parcel and then decide, you know, five years from now that, that we want to do something different, we, there are some options available to us that does allow them to repurchase the land. After completion of the future city project, the city desires to accept an offer from, for the purchase of the property from a third party other than another public or quasi-public agency or private entity that desires to use the property for civic use. So, these are just some of the main points that are in the staff report that I wanted to call to your attention.
I know, I'm sorry, I was looking around. We have some questions.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Rush?
And I have, obviously Erica is gonna assist to answer questions because this was an agreement that went back and forth between the attorneys and has been vetted thoroughly.
Thank you for the report.
Yeah, my, my questions are primarily in regards to the repurchase options. It's a little bit of musical chairs here, so. The first two scenarios, which is commencing the construction within seven years, ceasing for a year, prior to completion of the future city project, city desires to accept an offer from a purchase of a third party. It's actually a third one. So, on number three versus number four, we have the caveat disclaimer writer, whatever we wanna call it, of a public or quasi-public agency. But we don't, we have that on four, we don't have that on three. My question is why? And I think for any of these circumstances, probably three and four most particularly, would we still be required to go through that, I don't even know what it's called, it's the government code process where we have to offer public property to other public agencies before we offer it to a third party?
No, I don't believe so, because this is a contractual right that we're agreeing to now as a part of this transaction. So, wouldn't necessarily be surplus? It would be, if, if it follows through with, with repurchase by Lewis. If we're in a scenario, say on that third bullet point, where the city for some reason or another decides that that site is no longer where you want to have your city hall, and you just want to go to market with that property and see what you can get, then perhaps you, you might have a scenario where you have to go through that surplus offer first. But that's, these are real sort of contingencies that were hashed out between the attorneys, and I don't think that they were, you know, critical deal points necessarily between the staff.
Okay, well, whether they're critical or not, I wanna make sure we're following the law.
Right.
Why, so why do we have that caveat on four, but it wasn't included on three?
On four, the, the caveat's there because Lewis wanted to, originally as it was proposed, they wanted an unrestricted right of repurchase. And we were, we were able to negotiate down some restrictions, especially after a city hall facility is built. And if the city felt that there was an opportunity to house some other, other civic use there, that taking up that offer would not trigger a right of repurchase. So, in the hypothetical scenarios we were sort of discussing was if there was a educational institution or perhaps a performing arts facility or something like that, that has sort of a quasi-public civic nature to it, that the city would be able to pursue that without having to offer it up to Lewis to repurchase.
Okay. And in those latter two scenarios, we're agreeing to agree that they have the right to repurchase at the same price the third party has offered? Obviously, we don't know who, know who that is, but there's gonna be a substantial difference in that price versus an approved property versus an unapproved property, everyone understands that?
Yes, everyone understands that. And it's not just the same price, it's, it's all the same terms and conditions. So, if there was a deal reached that had additional terms on it that limited the sale for, just as you have it before you, development for only a specific type of use on that property, Lewis would have to agree to those same terms and conditions in order to repurchase.
Okay. Thank you, I had... So, there's no scenario in which they have the right to repurchase it for what we're paying now?
No.
Okay. I think that concludes all my questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I'll move approval.
Second.
I did have one question, I know you, Erica, have been... I, I guess many people have had their hands in this, you guys have been doing a great job. Were there any areas in here that you feel we should, we could do differently?
Well, there's always options to do things differently, but I'm comfortable with the terms of this agreement, yes.
Okay. All right, we have a first, we have a second, Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lorimer?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we are now moving on to item nine point two, related but not the same. That's the lease agreement for a city hall expansion. Ms. Rodriguez?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. The item before you is an item that was discussed behind closed session in a February fourteenth meeting, where council provided direction to the city manager to negotiate a lease agreement for the city hall expansion. For the sake of the public to understand, we were requesting consideration to expand city hall into the next door facility, which was formerly known as the Styles for Less, I think it was most commonly known as, which would be Suite 900. This option would allow city hall to expand for the much-needed growth of city staff and continuing to provide service for the city of Eastvale. Not to mention, there's some time constraints within that that I'll explain a little bit later. The proposal is to expand city hall into the twenty-six, approximately 2,600 floor plan that's next door with minimal cost to the city of outright costs. To break down some of those costs, actually, before I break down the costs, I wanna bring to the attention of the council that there was some analysis done at that closed session that staff had put together, kinda comparing and contrasting the various options to move city hall, expand city hall, or allow staff to telecommute. At the discussion with council, we, it was approved to move forward with the option one, which would be to expand the city hall. So, some of the benefits of expanding city hall is that we would not have to move city hall to a different location, which could confuse the public as to where we're moving, and then to eventually move in the next, you know, three, five to seven years. Centralizing all of our resources in one and to keep all of our resources housed under one rather than splitting staff, having folks telecommute and created, creating somewhat of a fragmented environment. Some of the other items that were, were, were considered to is relocating the emergency operations center back to city hall. It currently got relocated to Station 27 because we were simply outgrowing city hall with the equipment that's needed to off, to function in EOC in case of an emergency. So, that would allow us to move it back to city hall. One of the other benefits and highlights, which is kind of timely, is to expand, to build a council chamber into that expansion area, which would allow these meetings, public safety commission meetings and special meetings to take place at our temporary city hall location.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
Would they have air conditioning?
Absolutely, that we could control. And we would be, and not that we're not grateful for the current location, but that location would, would allow for a, a real dais for council members with raised floors, more comfortable chairs, less noise, and there would be no time constraints. I know sometimes there's items on the agenda that exceed the time we're allotted here in the elementary school, and sometimes there's urgent matters that need to be discussed that are cut short. Less distractions, more safety elements to consider, but there'd be a much safer environment. We have some ideas on how to make it a safer environment, you know, with, you know, the doors that can lock one way out and one way in and, and things of that nature. So, that would be a really big benefit. Right now, staff spends a considerable amount of time, you know, transporting equipment back and forth. So, there's, there's a ton of benefits there, it would allow us for training in the council chamber if it's not in use for council meetings and so forth. It would allow for us to have, you know, training sessions, things of that nature. And air conditioning is obviously a bonus. So, there's, there's a few, there's a lot of advantages to it. I wanna also bring to attention, and I know the city manager will expand later, on the growing staff, but we have a number of growing staff coming in, in the next coming weeks. And if you've been to city hall, you see that we are literally sitting two to three to a cubicle. It's somewhat low-ventilated just because of the amount of staff members that we have currently. On Wednesdays, when we have contract staff there on top, we're double capacity and it's just, we have people working in the kitchen, we have people working in conference calls in the car, quite literally. So, we're just, we need, we need to expand. So, in moving forward, in your staff report, you can see some of the breakdown of numbers. It was anticipated that the, the improvement cost would cost approximately $51,000. In the contract, or the lease agreement proposed, $40,000 would be covered by the property owners, which would leave the city hall holding the bag of approximately $11,000 that we have confirmed can be used or paid for, funded through the city's developer impact fees, the DIF fees. To take it a step further, we had contacted county surplus to acquire free furniture as to not incur more costs, and we, it's kind of a first-come, first-served basis. They don't really save things for you, even though they're supposed to, but it's a first-come, first-served basis. We capitalized on the opportunity and acquired some free furniture, desks, conference room tables that cost zero to city hall. So, we got, I believe, several thousand dollars worth of furniture for, for nothing. And those are being stored at, at various locations that we could find a room in. In addition to that, we're still, the city manager's still negotiating some of the, the lease rate agreements, but I wanna draw attention to page two of your staff report, where this proposed lease is considered a triple net lease, which would basically, which basically identifies that there's some pass-through costs and shared costs in terms of taxes, common area expenses, and property insurance on top of what our, our base lease would be. In the chart there, we took the liberty of highlighting some of the, the like areas in, around at the shopping centers that the property owner owns. And the 2,600 square foot would be somewhere between 329 and 390 per square foot, not inclusive of the additional charges, which we don't have the confirmed dollar amount as of right now. So, you can see there on the chart what, what that looks like for current rates for those properties, what the projected rates are gonna be. So far, from what we've seen in this lease agreement, it'd be a 36-month lease, and it looks like it's a stabilized rate across those three years, again, for just the rate, not including those additional costs of pass-through charges. Some of the other things that I want to, to highlight is this expansion of property would, would come at a much timely manner. Like I said before, we do have staff coming, we have an equation that we're dealing with, with increased staff members happening within the next 30 days. And we need to get this, if we're gonna move forward, we need to get the renovations started quickly, which we're anticipating to be about 30 days to, to construct some minor construction. There is a copy of the proposed map within your staff report as well. So, given these factors, staff is recommending that council approve the lease agreement to expand city hall into the, the Suite 900, which is next door, and also authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the expansion to take place. And with that, myself, city manager, and the city attorney are available to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Before we do that, do we have any public comments on this item? Okay.
We receive none.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments? Mr. Rigby?
I have a question, not regarding this item. I think it's, might be something that you just said. Did we do public comment on the item before?
Exactly what I just asked.
Yeah, no, I realize, are we? Does, did anybody wanna speak on the previous item?
Do we need to go back and open that?
If there's no one saying right now that they would want to speak on that item, I feel comfortable just moving forward.
And for the record, no one left. Yeah, nobody left the room since. So, nobody wants to speak on the last item, right? Speak now, forever? Okay. Okay, thank, thank you, thank you for that. Do we have any questions on this item?
I do, I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Looking at our, our facility here, do we feel confident that that is gonna be enough room to house everything that we need?
So, in the, in the draft, I say draft, but in the draft outline that we have as part of your staff report in the, I think it's the second attachment, we considered not only the current staffing levels and the onboarding of, of staff, but also any future staff that may be coming onboard. And with the movement of staff and the expansion, it will allow space for other positions to, to live comfortably in the expansion.
Okay. I think it's great that we were able to get the rate at with a, with no escalation. I think that's great and not real typical. You tend to see a CPI sometimes with that, so that was really good. One of the things that I did notice is on the pricing for the renovations. Let me get back to that, I'm sorry. It says $51,000 for a total price, and I know you mentioned about equipment and stuff, so we don't anticipate any additional equipment, desks, chairs, any of that stuff that we're gonna need.
There may be some minor costs, but based on the inventory that we acquired, it looks like we covered most things, there might be some ancillary costs in the move that we maybe hadn't foreseen, so there is a little bit of wiggle room that would be there. But those anticipated costs, we tried to, we tried to really narrow it down to not incur any additional costs, but obviously, there's always room for potential costs, but we try to mitigate that in front.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor Rigby, that, that's part of the reason we're going through county surplus. City hall's not really pretty right now because all of the equipment in city hall, all the desks and cubicles is county surplus, so it is a bit of a hodgepodge. And as Aleah had pointed out, it's kinda, you get what you get when you go to county surplus, so there may be instances where we might have to fill in with some, by purchasing some chairs or some, you know, storage racks or, or something of that nature. But our, our goal is, is to really get the bulk of the office equipment as far as desks, chairs, conference room, tables, et cetera, to try to get that through county surplus.
I would make a recommendation for, on the equipment side, that we do do something decent for a conference table. I will say it's embarrassing when you have large companies coming in and you're meeting there, and one person pushes the conference table and the whole conference table shakes back and forth, and you're afraid that it's gonna separate.
It just takes a bolt.
But I would say that we do, I mean, invest into something like that. But one of the things that I was looking at with, with the cost, going back to the cost, was looking at the stuff that the landlord is willing to do. I just hope that everything's in here, because you look at like, for instance, the walls, they don't anticipate, at least what I read in here, they, they don't plan on doing the walls to make individual offices. So, I don't know if that's taken into consideration in our budget.
So, it is taken into consideration. Let me back up, as having been the person with the U-Haul down at county surplus, moving on a, on a very rainy day. Stephen and I, we found the conference tables to be somewhat of an upgrade to what's currently in city hall. They're not perfect, there is a few blemishes towards the bottom, but we did our best to try to find things that were a little more to industry, industry standard and represents the city of Eastvale. Having said that, the expansion next door, having toured it with some of my colleagues, it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful spot, and where we would have conference rooms are near the windows where there's light coming in, and we feel that we could probably stage it appropriately. And reference your, your wall request, there's gonna be minimal wall removal. And when it's coming to building of walls, there's only gonna be a few, a couple of building walls. The rest of the, the desk area would be predominantly cubicle spaces, which we can also get from county surplus. So, in the map that's on there, there's some highlighted areas that indicate they're gonna be tearing down, if approved, the wall when you first walk into city hall to your immediate left, which would be the east wall, tearing out that front wall, but not to surpass the front conference room, so that we could extend the permit counter and the business registration area. And so, that would just be tearing a wall simply down, and then building a subsequent wall to border an office for human resources and a conference room up by the front window. There might be another wall or partition where council chamber is gonna be, I believe it's, it's pegged to be a partition, much like the one that's right behind you with the, the sliding doors. And that would be because if you have a larger council meeting and you need to expand and open that up, you can probably open that up and, and allow... and allow for more of the community to come in and sit. So we kind of, we're thinking that would be more of an accordion type wall. So there's minimal wall structure.
So our intent is to try to design this as a flexible space as much as possible. We, we want to be able to hold our score classes there, so the, the dais would, would be there, but our, there would be a wall separating the city council meeting area from the conference room that would be kind of a retractable wall. So as Aaliyah said, you can expand or, or scale down the size and accessibility of the meeting. We also want to allow the Eastville Chamber of Commerce to have some space when council chambers are not in session to utilize that space for some of their meetings. So again, we're trying to design this as smart and flexible and as inexpensively as possible. That's kind of been the, the theme here with staff.
Do we have any further questions at this time? Do I have a motion?
I would still move second.
We got, first, we have a second. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot.
Yes.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby.
Huh?
We did the public comment.
We did the public comment, okay.
I missed it last time.
Now we're getting paranoid.
No, we, we got it. Everybody's good. You feel comfortable. Okay.
And Mayor Lormar.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Excellent. Okay. We are now moving, yes, sir.
We didn't open public comment. We did not.
I asked for public comment.
We did. There were none.
We're, we're good. Okay. We're good.
Okay.
It's late.
It's warm. All right, we are moving on to item nine point three, and that is the approval of lease agreement with Verizon Wireless for cell tower fourteen four ninety-one Chandler Street, Fire Station Thirty-One. Ms. Vega?
Yes, I'll be presenting this item. Thank you, mayor and council members, members of the public. I'll keep this brief. What you have before you this evening is a lease agreement for a cell tower on city property, the vacant land behind Fire Station Thirty-One. This cell tower has already been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission for design and construction, and photometrics have been included in your packet as well as the conditions of approval. What we have before you tonight is the lease agreement between the city and Verizon that will actually give them the property rights to be able to construct it. So Verizon is proposing to lease a thirty-two foot by thirty-two foot square area along with ingress egress rights over a driveway which they will have to pave to build the cell tower, which is disguised as a water tank. In the terms of the lease, what we, what we were able to negotiate with Verizon is twenty-five hundred dollars a month in the first year, which is thirty thousand dollars a year with a three percent annual escalator. And I was not a math major, but I did some calculations, and given that there's a potential maximum of twenty years on this term, by year ten, that would be forty thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars a year, year fifteen, forty-six thousand seven thirty-nine a year, and year twenty, fifty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars a year. In addition to that revenue, Verizon has agreed to split sixty forty, forty percent to the city, any additional rents that come in from co-locating other cell providers' equipment on the tower. And the city would also be able to perhaps get some additional revenues if those cell tower providers who are co-locating need additional ground space outside of that thirty-two foot by thirty-two foot area. But that's speculative at this point. In addition, Verizon has agreed to language regarding maintenance of the tower that specifically requires them to keep it in reasonably good condition and acknowledging that, given the long term of this lease, reasonable wear and tear, normal wear and tear that aggregates over time, they would have an obligation to, to repair. So with that, I've also included in the staff report some comparisons for your reference for similar lease agreements with J C S D and the city of Norco. And you can see that the lease rates are fairly similar, the terms are very similar. However, the co-location rent share is something that we were able to negotiate that's not presently in those, those agreements. So with that, I'll just, if there's any comments, questions?
No. Are there any public comments?
Yes, that's.
We have received none.
We have received none. Does anybody want to comment on this?
I just want to thank staff for going back to the drawing board as it were and getting a little more, a little bit more meat on the bones here. So it looks like they accepted some of our recommendations, and I'm happy about that. I'd move approval unless there's any other questions.
Second. We have two seconds even, so. Mr. Aguilar.
Does that make four?
Yes.
Councilmember Plot.
Yes.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby.
Aye.
Mayor Lormar.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we are moving on to item nine point four, and this is the County Board of Supervisors K P M G pilot program on the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Ms. Nissen?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I will do my best to cover this in, with as much detail as possible, but not taking too much time because we, we are stretched for time again. The County Board of Supervisors, Riverside County Board of Supervisors entered into an agreement with K P M G, which is an auditing firm, to come and look at various functions at the county, particularly the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, to test operational efficiencies. They have been doing some tests in unincorporated areas of Riverside County. They tested some operational efficiencies in the city of Hemet, unincorporated, and Lake Elsinore, unincorporated areas. The County Board of Supervisors has, has approved an amendment with K P M G to review law enforcement contracts, city rates, in addition to the criminal justice system and operational efficiencies. They have asked that they now start to test this on contract cities. And so each of the Board of Supervisors sent a letter to the city manager for each of the contract cities that uses Sheriff's Department contract services and has offered up putting a pilot program in, in their city. For us, we, we function out of the Eurupa Valley Station, which services the city of Norco, Eastville, and Eurupa Valley. City staff and two council members did meet with K P M G and, and did go over some of their data and their proposal for how this could potentially roll out, should the city desire to move forward with the pilot program at the Eurupa Valley Station. However, one of the caveats was that all of the contract cities out of that station would have to agree. They have also said that the city would need to deliver a response to our District Two Supervisor Tavelloni's office by April twelfth, which is tomorrow, as to whether or not we want to see this program implemented. Now, I know that there has been a tremendous amount of discussion in the press about the K P M G study and what are, what benefits, what, what has come out of it that is productive or fruitful. And so we have listened to both sides of the equation. We've, we have two council members that, that met just yesterday with the Sheriff's Department staff and listened to their input on the K P M G study as well as the captain of the Hemet Station that was involved in the study that took place in the unincorporated area for Hemet. So this is something that would potentially impact our contract for the next several weeks while they tested it to see if there was any, any benefit to the city of Eastville. However, again, it does require that all three contract cities out of the Eurupa Valley Station agree to participate at this time. I have not heard any, any change to, to that requirement. I, I do know that the city of Eurupa Valley has expressed interest in participating and was recently informed that, I believe, the city of Norco had a discussion at their last city council meeting last week and had openly declined to participate. However, this is a discussion that, that we want our city council to, to weigh in on and give direction to staff on how you would like us to proceed with, with the Sheriff's Department contract and K P M G.
Okay. Are there any, are you complete?
Unless you'd like me to answer any questions.
Yes. Before we get to that, are there any comments on this from the public?
We have received none.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yeah, just a comment.
Okay, we'll start here and.
And I'm sorry, I would like to also add that the Board of Supervisors did also recently extend the K P M G contract, which is now up to forty million dollars.
I think it's more than that.
Is it more than that?
Yeah. I think that was just for last year.
And they are expanding it to other.
Their initial contract was forty-eight million.
Forty-eight million.
And that was a year and a half, two years ago. We're, we're, I don't want to show my hand, I guess, or get too far into it.
Let's do a question.
If you compare the contract to the county's budget deficit, kind of in a race for each other. But that's just my opinion. It's a lot of money.
Yes, it is, it is a lot of money, and I had asked at the city manager contract city meeting what the Sheriff's Department deficit was, and they had said sixty million dollars. And I said, and how much was the K P M G contract for? And they gave the number and.
Strangely the same.
It's, it's, it's unfortunate that, that we're in a pinch, the county's in a pinch. But we contract with services, we decide the number of staff that, that we want. And so we just want some direction from city council if you see any value in moving forward with allowing a pilot program. I, well, I'll allow the two council members that participated in the, the meeting to, to comment if they, if you have any thoughts to share on that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it brief. Both meetings with both K P M G and, and, I was with, with Riverside County Sheriff, both fruitful or good. I think there's some great ideas that, that do come from the K P M G side, but at this point, it kind of what our city manager brought up, it's kind of a dull point. The fact that the way it was presented by K P M G, that is, is if this is all or nothing, so all three cities have to agree in this. The fact that Norco is not, as publicly expressed, they don't want to disagree, there's not really a point in having the conversation because right now, they won't do it. So at this point, there's really not even a reason to even have the discussion. Because again, even if we wanted to do it technically by what they told us in that meeting, is that it couldn't happen. So there's really no point in even discussing it further, you know, but I'm sure everyone's got comments. So, sorry, right to the point there.
I, I agree with that to a point, but I think, since we have it, I think it is worth discussing because you never know what they may come back and say, oh, if one city wants to do it, then we'd have to revisit it again. So I think it's good for us to kind of make a decision now as to what we want to do. With that being said, as we go back to when our, our law enforcement contract was recently amended, I was all for having an audit, some sort of outside agency come in, and when, after we met with K P M G, I'll be honest, it was very enticing. It was, wow, this could be, this could be a very good program. But my, one of my questions after talking with K P M G was, why wasn't the Sheriff's Department invited? I think it should be more of a collaboration rather than a separation. And I, I think that there should be that disconnect, or that there is that disconnect where it should be strongly connected. If we're asking our Sheriff's Department or our Police Department to participate in this, they should have been involved in this. And it was very disappointing that K P M G did not invite or even insist that the Sheriff's Department should be there. So that was very disappointing with that. One of the things after talking with the Sheriff's Department, we asked them about some statistics. And it just kind of goes to show some of the statistics that was provided also. The statistics that were provided by K P M G that they presented with us, once again, were very eye-opening, I guess you would say. As we got, and, and for the record, I literally saw the printout from Captain Hedge, our police chief, that showed some of these, the clarification of some of these statistics, which were completely off from what K P M G presented to us. So that, that part was, was pretty disappointing. There were some questions that I asked K P M G regarding their specific knowledge of, of law enforcement, interaction, and evaluation, which was not, I didn't feel it was, was real, that they don't have the expertise to be able to dive into a Sheriff's Department. That was just my initial thought. Our city manager provided us, yesterday as we were meeting with, with the Sheriff's Department, provided us with additional information about the pilot process. I went through and I read their bios of the people that are conducting the audit. And just for my colleagues' information, I think this is very crucial to look at and to see that the people that are auditing this do not have any experience in law enforcement here in the United States, except one. And one, he has experienced some experience, I believe it was as a corporal in Ventura. And you're coming in, yeah, they have, there's a couple of people that have experience in the UK with law enforcement. Totally different ballgame than the United States. Even from, I would, I would say, from state to state, almost county to county, things are different. So if you're coming from country to country to evaluate law enforcement, it's kind of, you may be able to implement something in the UK that is not going to work here in the United States, specifically in the Riverside County area. So I think that's something to be very cautious of, is that you're, you're looking to have, once again, I'm all for, you know, possibly doing some sort of audit to see where we can improve in our, our efficiencies, but I think it needs to be someone that knows what they're doing. I'm not saying K P M G doesn't know what they're doing, but I will say that I don't feel that they have the expertise to be able to do a thorough audit on our Sheriff's Department, specifically our Police Department here in the city of Eastville.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't remember how long, maybe it was several councilmen ago. Councilmember Rigby had brought this up about maybe doing an audit. Hindsight looking forward at this and kind of sitting with the K P M G and, you know, I, I think it's good to collect some really, some, some good data that maybe could help, again, the efficiency of, of our law enforcement. I think that's maybe something we need to really consider looking, is maybe doing our own, our own audit. It's, it's not a hindsight twenty-twenty. It's, it's actually not a bad idea. Maybe something to reconsider later on, so I'll just kind of.
Completely agree with people that have expertise in the industry. And I think that's something that we would need to evaluate at a, at a further time. But like I said, I don't feel that K P M G has the expertise to be able to come in and to accurately, to accurately look for efficiencies. Going back to, I mean, we met with the captain from the Hemet Station that went through this, and he openly said that there were some areas of concern that he had from things that K P M G was doing, just, just on professional practices, industry standards, just on response times of when response time was calculated and different things like that, that just weren't accurate from what K P M G, how they were doing it. So I, I don't, I don't think it would be beneficial for the city of Eastville.
Mr. Mayor, excellent.
Yes, sir. Well, the concern, or what the information I'd like to know is the deputies that were impacted. What was, what was their opinion? You know, did it affect morale? Was it something that they thought was beneficial?
Mayor, or excuse me, Councilmember Tesari, that was one of my questions yesterday, was what was the impact on the morale of the officers? And they did say it was, it was not a favorable impact. Many of them had, their, their schedules shifted. Basically, they, they loaded the weekends, staffed up on the weekends, which left gaps for service during the week. And then you're getting angry citizens because what was happening during the week was lingering longer than it should have because there wasn't adequate personnel staffed. And so it's a, you know, catch twenty-two. Maybe the, the weekend saw a slight improvement in response times and, and turnover on calls for service, but then you're dealing with people that are really angry because you, there wasn't adequate staffing during the week. So, yeah, they, they didn't say, maybe the council members that participated could also add. And they, they said it was a negative impact to staffing. and they said it was a negative impact to staffing morale. And they, you know, at the end of a shift, typically the officers come back to the briefing, back to the station a little bit sooner to finish up reports, write reports. KPMG saw that as a negative and felt that they should be staying out in the field and allow for some overlap, but that also does potentially result in more overtime because if you're out in the field to the very last minute of your shift and you pick up a call that is larger in scope, you are going to get, you're going to have to stay on that call until it's complete. So, you know, that, that was also a morale issue. They were talking about shifting schedules, going to, you know, five eights instead of four tens and it was not favorable by the officers, is I believe was my impression.
Well, I think overall, I think the writings on the wall that they went a little bit longer in the city of Hemet for their pilot program under direction of the sheriff, just to make sure that they thoroughly vetted this program. But as soon as that was over, they went back to what they were doing before. City of Lake Elsinore, or I'm sorry, unincorporated area of Lake Elsinore is in the process of doing their pilot program right now. But I mean, I, I don't know, I think that kind of shows that, why did they go back to what they were doing before the pilot program?
Oh, I mean, it's not unusual, I, you know, everybody in, especially in public safety is very, usually very resistant to change. But when there are legitimate morale issues, it costs money and it affects public safety. So I think it's important, it's one of the most important things.
I would like to add, in speaking with Captain Hedge, some of the things that they do, I think that the Sheriff's Department already does, we tend to take for granted. They already optimize their schedule. They already analyze the calls for service and take seventy-two hour snapshots and weekly snapshots of crime statistics and adjust schedules accordingly. You know, during certain seasons of the year, we staff up. I'm not going to share that and give away too much information for people that are looking to commit crimes in Eastville, but we, we already are addressing the schedule needs by staffing up and using some of our quality of life hours to address those, those needs when, when we see a spike in crime. And I say we, I mean, this is really the expertise of the captain and the lieutenant that are making these calls.
And not every community is identical. Certain, certain schedules and systems work better in some communities than they do in others.
Correct, and the needs are different. The needs of Arupa Valley are very different than the needs of Eastville.
One thing I will say, I didn't really mention it yesterday at this meeting though, with using this as an example to Hemet, and that's where they ask, it's, Hemet's eight-hundred square miles versus Eastville's twelve and a half. So it's a bad comparison because of, there's time, you can't, there's no comparison in that. So I think, my only argument against the Sheriff's Department would be, we can't really use that comparison as how it could work here. I think some of the, there are some of the issues that Councilmember brought up about, yeah, there's, the stats weren't very accurate. I mean, you can kind of point them out because we know some of our own, some of the stats they had in Eastville, were just simply not accurate. We can use our basic information that we get monthly that we know they're inaccurate. But I also can make the comparison, we, this is the examples Hemet, it's kind of not a good comparison to use versus what we have here in Eastville, it's not even, it's apples and oranges, so it's kind of even harder to assess an opinion. So, just want to bring that up.
Mr. Rush?
I'm not in favor, I can go into as much detail as you want, but.
I'll second your motion.
Yeah. Given the hour, it seems like a lost cause.
Yeah. I, I too have serious issues with this proposal by KPMG coming to town. Also, I, I'm afraid if I get started, it will, I'm going to get angry. So, we have a first, we have a second. Mr. Aguilar. And that is to, and that is to, what, not?
Not.
Not go with KPMG?
Well, the motion is approve or deny, so I think the motion would be to deny.
To deny?
Yes.
We have a first, we have a second, to deny KPMG access to the city of Eastville.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lorimer?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that completes our business items. And we are now, council business, we are now moving on to item ten, that's the City Manager Report, City Staff Report. Do we have any?
Yes, a quick update from myself. We do have our Assistant City Manager, starting on Monday. He will be joining us. And we'll have him obviously at the next city council meeting where we'll do a public introduction to the successful candidate as well as a press release. We'll be coming out next week introducing him to the community. We also have our new Code Enforcement Officer, Christopher De Hessa, starting on Wednesday of next week. And we have Stephanie Vasquez, that's our new Deputy City Clerk, and she will be starting on the twenty-third. And I apologize, I forgot to give you the name of our new Assistant City Manager, and that's Brian Jones. And so you'll be meeting all of them at the next council meeting.
Excellent.
And, oh, yes, the big announcement, I'm sure you saw it on Facebook, that everyone's very excited Costco is opening earlier than expected. They contacted us and would like to open two days earlier, so that will be June twenty-eighth. Please save the date. They'll have festivities and we, staff are working, is working with Costco to assist them through interviews. So we're encouraging anyone that's interested in a position at Costco to go through their online employment application process. They are already currently interviewing folks for management level positions and now we'll be assisting them with a location in Eastville to conduct interviews for the rest of the staff positions.
Our conference room at City Hall?
Well.
Awesome. Thank you for those updates. So does that mean that they are going to be ready for everybody shopping for the Fourth of July?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Excellent.
Yes, and, and gassing up their cars before they head out of town for the Fourth of July.
Washing their cars.
Well, okay, so let me stand, let me correct that information. So Costco set aside land to build the car wash within the first three years. So the car wash will not be coming immediately upon ground opening with, with the gas station, but all of the other components of Costco will be open at the same time.
Can I drive them to one of our guests, our car washes that don't work?
Hopefully, we will have other car washes coming soon.
Thank you for the update, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Do we, do we have any staff reports?
Quick hammer update. All contracts have been executed, we have a pre-job Monday. And this past Monday, we went out and we staked right away in the frontage of Swan Lake, and we also marked on the pavement the limits of what's being proposed in the, in our project as far as making transitions along Swan Lake itself at the entrance. We met with the landscape superintendent and asked him to back off on the watering, and he agreed, although he may be, be overruled, but we've asked him to go from three days a week to one day a week. We really don't want to go out there and do the excavation and have to wait two weeks for the ground to dry out. They do a lot of watering there. And we also met with another person that's part of the management staff, or property management staff there at Swan Lake, and walked her through the project. And our city attorney also sent a strongly worded letter regarding, we need a response quickly. We finally did get a response, and if you want to say anything about that, Erica, feel free.
I'm doing my best to work with Swan Lake's legal counsel to hopefully get them to come to light regarding the understanding of what the project actually entails. So I'm hopeful, but this is awesome. Thank you, I think I need it.
That's one step in the right direction. We warned them.
Yeah, tendatively, we're looking at March seventh as a start date, we're still working with Swan Lake trying to resolve those issues. That's, that's my, my report.
Is that May seventh?
May seventh, yes.
Excellent, yes.
Two quick updates, we're going to be taking the aggressive panhandling draft ordinance to Public Safety Commission on April twenty-fourth. Save for any, any recommendations that they may have, we are hoping to bring it back to council or bring it to council on the next day on April twenty-fifth. So, we're hoping that it'll go through and with, it's a pretty standard ordinance, it's a regional approach. The second thing is, is we're having a cert class this weekend, that's a full class of forty folks, Eastville residents, I believe mostly, so we'll give you a report on how that went, following the class. Olivia?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and members of the public that are still here, thank you for sticking it out. There are a few updates and upcoming events that I'd like to share with you, a few updates that I was going to share have already been shared, so thank you, team. As a reminder, this month is distracted driving awareness month, and I hope you guys have been following along our social media platforms. We still have some really fun educational and outreach efforts to be, had this month, so keep following along. The Eastville Police Department will be participating in a tip-a-cop fundraising event in support of the Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics, and that's going to be tomorrow evening at Claim Jumper in Corona from five to nine PM. Excellent service is expected during this event as deputies will be serving you, so come out and take part in it. I think Lieutenant Martin will also be serving, is that correct? Yep, so come and visit him. And our next financial goal-setting study session and workshop will be held on Wednesday, April twenty-fifth at five-thirty PM, which is also open to the public. Our regular city council meeting will proceed after. As Dennis Green mentioned earlier from the Limonite and Interchange, or Limonite Interchange Project, we're going to be partnering with the Eastville Chamber of Commerce in a business outreach workshop in which we will be extending the invitation to the local chambers, Norco, Corona and Arupa Valley's Chamber of Commerce, to extend that invitation to their membership and local businesses. That's going to be held on May twenty-second at six PM, and more details to follow. I think that's it, thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Lieutenant Martin, how many plates can you carry?
I'm going to go with six.
Without dropping them?
I'm going to go with one.
Any other comments or questions? Any other reports? Okay, hearing none, we are moving on to item number eleven, and that is City Council Communications Committee Reports. Start down here, any?
We've got a meeting, public safety meeting on Friday, so next, next meeting.
I have nothing to report from the RTA, because actually I was at the meeting with KPMG the same, the same day, so, but tomorrow we have our regional RTA, the team out meeting, so I'll give a report from there. A couple items I did want to bring up, there was something, I wanted to bring up last council, we were just so strapped for time, but something kind of happened, got a couple weeks back, I think with one of our Cub Scout troops, twenty-seventeen, and they, they basically got a national recognition of selling the most popcorn. I don't know if we can, if we can do some type of.
Yeah, pretty cool.
Certificate, get, get the troop in here and kind of do some type of certificate of recognition on that, because they basically, I don't remember the total number of sales, but they were, they sold, outsold everyone, the entire nation of popcorn sales, and so we'd like to see if we can get that done for them.
And I wanted to get some popcorn.
It's like eighty thousand dollars or something, it was, they blew it out by, they like tripled the number. One thing I wanted to bring up is, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, at Silver Lakes, it's put on by the Nutri Shop on Eastville, right by City Hall, they're having a Health and Fair Fitness, and basically all different things of health and fitness, but one thing that's really cool that they're doing, and Silver Lakes has actually done this before, you know, kind of there's a backstory to this, is they're doing basically free heart screening for kids. And what's really neat about is, not necessarily this event, but Silver Lakes had did this before to where they had this going on at one of the big showcases, and they ended up finding two kids that actually, that they ended up finding two kids that had some type of heart issues and were able to discover, had no idea because they were doing this free heart screening. So, wanted to throw that out there, I think it's a pretty cool event. Outside of that though, there's still meal prep stuff that you can learn, or all different types of things, so, get that. And then one big announcement, I, that I know myself and Councilmember are very proud of, along with Don Pettit, was April sixteenth at Swan Lake, that is our, literally our final neighborhood watch, and we can honestly say with assurity that every single neighbor in Eastville has a neighborhood watch program, that is, basically, at least has four captains to it, at least, almost that many, right, about four captains to it, and now we're going to be kind of looking at how we kind of implement it, how we kind of create the infrastructure, how we make it really effective. But it was a goal, it's taken about almost a little under a year to do it, and we want to thank all the, all the people that have been support. You know, Monica's one of our captains too as well, and so we want to thank everyone that's, that's so, and we're not done by any means, but it's just kind of cool to have that foundation and that groundwork already in place now, because we can do a lot of fun things with that. So, that's it.
That's awesome. Mr. Rush?
Nothing really of noteworthyness.
Mr. Rigby?
I will also be at the lead policy committees for the Community Service Policy Committee, which meets on Friday. But one thing that I wanted to bring up real quick is, just for information purposes, I received the Eastville Parks Commission Agenda for next week, and one of the items on there is the discussion on park security services. As we know, as many people know, Deputy Flores is being transferred. That contract that the, that JCSD has with the Sheriff's Department is set to expire on June thirtieth of this year. They're looking at utilizing security services, from what I get off of this, is they're looking from utilizing security services, possibly in lieu of renewing or extending that contract. So just something to, to be aware of. I hope, and I think I have a, an idea that my counterpart on that commission feels the same way I do, that that's not acceptable, that we need to renew that contract. So we'll try and push as much as we can, but obviously that'll be up to the board to decide, JCSD Board, but just wanted to let you guys know about that.
It's a good update. And, huh? And not, not only update, but when that initial deputy was put in for the parks, I understand it was a different time, we had much less in terms of residents using those parks. So, and I know that a deputy, and as amazing as Deputy Flores is, and we are going to miss her, she could not cover all the park, she was not on seven days a week, and we, I think we need another park deputy as well, but instead of doing away with him.
I brought that up at a previous meeting, and that's why, I'll be honest, I'm very disappointed to see this even a consideration, because I asked about adding an additional deputy for the park system, and now to see them thinking about utilizing security service for that. It may be a long meeting.
Okay, thank you for the update. I do have a couple of updates. First of all, I want to thank everybody for taking time out of their busy schedules, and I know that, for the SCAG election that took place recently. I am very honored to be able to rep, continue representing not only Eastville, but the city of Arupa Valley and Norco at the Regional Council at SCAG, that election took place a little bit ago. And so I'm very thankful to everybody that was able to take time to do that, and I'm honored that our neighbors feel the same and put me forward to continue the representation. So I'm very excited about that. Also, wanted to extend, I sent an email to everybody up. Also, wanted to extend, I, I sent an email to everybody up here today regarding the, um, General Assembly, that's going to be taking place, um, in the beginning of next month. If you have not already done so, please RSVP for that, uh, for the SCAG General Assembly. Since our last meeting, also, I believe it was the day after? No, oh, anyway, there was the, over the recent weekend, went out to, uh, March Air Base, I guess it was on Friday, and they had their centennial, um, celebration for the March Air Base being here in the, well, where it is today. And, um, they had some parachute, uh, teams come in to help with the celebration. But March Air Base, which is now a reserve base, is, um, very important to our region. When they became a reserve base, it was, and stopped being a full-time base. Uh, it was detrimental to the region, its economy, and, uh, really hurt Marina Valley and Riverside. Uh, but they have turned it around in a lot of ways by incorporating, making it not just a, um... Well, all different branches of the military and other federal agencies are based out of there. So it's still, and it is interconnected as well to the Norco Air Base, or Norco Naval Warfare Station here. Um, and those, we have members from our community that work in relation to our nation's defense at these facilities, so it was a very worthwhile event to go out there. Also, we had since then an RT, uh, a RCA, thank you, not RTA. We're not talking about transportation, we're talking about conservation. And, um, at this, it was a, one of those short meetings as well. Um, some land was purchased, which is the point of the organization in, to buy lands for mitigation against, uh, for development, so that we will maintain the, these lands in perpetuity. Um, but while there, they talked about, and I'm trying to find it in my phone, I took a picture. Uh, the animal of the month was the... I'm running into it. This is the Feruginus Hawk, which is one of the largest hawks in North America. And, uh, it goes through and its diet consists of squirrels and other small, ground-dwelling animals. But, um, I would encourage you to check it out, I believe it's on the RCA website. And, um, that concludes my comments, and we will be moving to closed session. Um, at this time, we're recessing to closed session. Ms. Vega, will you introduce the item, please?
Uh, yes, we'll be going into closed session, uh, for a conference with, uh, labor negotiators. Um, I will be the agency's, uh, designated representative and to discuss the city manager's contract.
Thank you, thank you.